Okay, good evening. I will call to order the March 18th, 2019 Regula Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting, and our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. And after that, I want to ask our chaplain, Reverend Patrick Womack, to come forward for our invocation. So if everyone would please stand for the pledge.
Almighty and everlasting God, our Father, we give you praise and we thank you that on this beautiful day, there is the opportunity to conduct the people's business. We pray that you'll please bless these our commissioners with wisdom and discernment as we ask each time. The Lord truly guide them in the making of decisions that this will be more than simply rendering verdicts based on information received on paper. But Father, they may be mindful of the people they are elected to serve. And so, we are grateful for them and pray that you will bless them. Please lift their burdens. But bless all of us that we may demonstrate those things that are good in your sight as we thank you, that by your grace, we may exhibit love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. Bless us, we pray. In your name, amen.
Thank you Reverend Womack. Our next order of business will be our public comment session. I have two people who have signed up to speak. If you do not sign up to speak, you can, after the folks that have signed up to speak have spoken, you can just raise your hand and I'll recognize you and you can come forward. We would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking for a group, we'll allow it to five. And on the podium, there are green, yellow, and red. So when the yellow's flashing, you've got about 20 seconds, and when the red's on, we would ask that you please sum up your comments. So the first person to sign up to speak is Jean Larson. If you would come forward and state your name and where you live.
Here's my photographer. My name is Jean Larson. I live at 111 Serenity Drive in Brookside Estates off of Hemp Hill. We originally decided to come here, there's a group, I don't know if y'all know Next Door app on your iPhone? It was a very lively discussion about some of the trash that accumulates off of Hemp Hill around the trailer park. How many of you are familiar with Hemp Hill? You all know it? Okay, there's a trailer park right there across from a very high-end area, and then there is a gentleman who apparently is sort of a hoarder from what I'm told, and he's been saving all of that stuff. So, we were trying to figure out how to get it cleaned up a little bit, and Scott McClay, where did he go? There he is, spoke to Chris Boyd, and some progress has been made, which is really good. I was looking at your webpage, and it said that your code enforcement is, "This ordinance applies to unincorporated areas of the county to address public health concerns involving the accumulation of trash." I would hope that we also add quality of life, attractiveness, to something like that. I think it's really important, this is such a beautiful area. I lived here for seven years. Before that, I vacationed here for five years. The other people here have had similar, if not longer, experiences. However, the only really thing that I just get frustrated with is driving up Hemp Hill to come home and seeing all this accumulation of trash, and two buildings that are falling down that could be damaging to somebody, like kids or something, if they were around there. So we thought maybe we would ask you if there was some possibility that you could work on some code enforcement issues. Because my understanding in the, that Asheville is running out of space and money for housing, and that people are moving this way, and I think that's good for Haywood County. I know that the county commissions I've been involved with before are always interested in tax dollars, so that's one of the things, businesses and so forth. But people who are going to spend money are going to want to live in an attractive area. And I would really hope that you guys would sort of put it together and come up with some code enforcement, and some fines, and maintenance and upkeep to that, so that we can keep this area attractive, and those areas that are not attractive now, improve them. Now, I will say that there has been some progress made in this area, so that's good. But I think it's going to take a long time. People throw appliances, and you know, the old trailers that nobody could live in, and they're just like junk, deteriorating. And it just seems that they could be taken away. One experience I had on Hemp Hill, somebody had parked a blue car by the side of the road, and about two years ago, I called and said, "There's this car, and it's just deserted. Could somebody do something?" And they did come up eventually and tag it. It was more than a year later that somebody moved it. And it just seems like we could do better than that. And I want to thank you very much for listening, and I hope you'll help us. It'd be really nice if you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Okay, our next speaker will be Ted Carr.
Ted Carr is my name. What a beautiful, beautiful sunny day, and I see that a friend of mine, Ken Thomas, is on the schedule. And so, that just reminded me that on a beautiful sunny day like this, we don't think about power, electric power, and the lines going down. But a few months ago, when it was storming and the terrible winds blowing, and the lines going down, that's when we call on the linemen, and that's when we need them. In the towns like this, you look along the streets, what an easy job it is to get lifted up there in a boom truck and service the line. But out in the rural areas, they got to trudge through the woods to deal with the power lines. So, I just thought it would be reasonable to take the time to show appreciation for what the linemen do for Haywood County.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment session. And the next item of business is the constituent concerns, and we'll start with Mark. Do you have any more? Kirk?
I don't have any.
Okay, and then Brad?
No.
No, sir.
Okay. As far as the trash that y'all were talking about, we did try to do an ordinance about 10 years ago, and the courthouse was full of folks that did not want an ordinance for that. But we do have our code enforcement, and I'm glad that they've been out on the site to do the inspections. And then also, on our electric lines, Ken will be doing us a resolution here in just a few minutes, so we appreciate that. Kenneth? Okay, I don't, is there any discuss, I'm sorry. Under administrative agency reports, we have our sheriff's annual report. And Sheriff Christopher, if you could come forward? Sheriff Christopher was, gave his report at a church a few weeks ago, and I thought it would be very appropriate if he gave that same report to the commission, to where it could be televised, and people could understand what you do, and what the obstacles and challenges that your department has. So go ahead.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, what I thought I would do is I'd just go ahead and combine the whole year from 2018 together, and I'll try to get through this in about 12 minutes if at all possible. So I'll talk fast. This report will be online tomorrow at www.haywoodncsheriff.com, which is our website. And so, whatever that I'm talking about this evening will be available tomorrow for the general public, as it is every year. I'm going to start by talking from an administrative standpoint for just a few minutes about pistol purchase permits and our handgun permits, our concealed carry permits. Both of those this year were down just a little bit. Sometimes that is a revenue generator for us, but 2018, they were down just a little bit from 2017. Moving along from that to our sex offender registry, we have 116 registered sex offenders in our county, three more than this time last year that we check on quarterly, that we know about is here in the county. Of course, it's mandatory that they register. Our civil process and our patrol papers that we serve, this year, we served nearly 21,000 papers of some kind, be it civil paper, or be it subpoenas, writs, whatever the case may be, whenever that a sheriff's deputy has to go out and knock on somebody's door and find them, that's what we're doing. Nearly 21,000 of those that came through our office. Out of that 21,000, there was about 3% of those papers that were not served. And most of the time, the reason that they're not served is because we have a bad address on the person that we're trying to find. So, and in 2018, our deputies took a total of 6,738 reports, either short form or long form reports, where we actually went out, answered the call, and had to do a report. Our communication center, 2018, our personnel in that comm center up there answered the telephone 147,000 times. That's amazing. Every year since I've been sheriff, it just continues to creep up. I guess the, I'm going to call it the, probably the saddest part about that is, most of the time, there's three people inside that comm center that's answering that phone at any one time. So, there's three people in there, sometimes four, during the heavy traffic hours, but 147,000 times that phone rang last year. Out of that, nearly 30,000 was specific calls for the sheriff's office that required a deputy to actually go out and respond and answer the call at someone's residence. Also, one of the very interesting things from 2018 for us in the comm center was that during Hurricane Florence, we are partnered with Brunswick County. And Brunswick County's comm center went down, obviously being right there on the coast, hit by the hurricane. Well, whenever that their comm center goes out, we become their comm center. And so, we started answering calls for Brunswick County, and we answered calls for two days for them. It was something that we had not done before, at least since I've been sheriff. And it was something that we felt very blessed to be able to do, and in the same token, just think about how thankful we are that we wasn't in the middle of a hurricane, that their entire comm center was flooded, and they all had to literally get up and leave the comm center because of the water coming in. But we were able to do that, and we just basically double-staffed for a couple of days. The same thing would happen with us. If we had the situation where our comm center went out, then they would start answering calls and dispatching for us as well. So, we're very blessed to have that, not only in Brunswick County, but in the center of our state, in Stanley County, we have an agreement with them as well. Of course, we have an agreement with Henderson County at the same time. So, we have different ways of putting something into place to where, hey, if something was to happen here, there's always somebody else that can take care of what's going on, but just with just a switch of a button, basically. I'll move right along here with telling you that our telecommunicators this past year totaled 3,300 hours of training, all of that mandated and required by the state of North Carolina, 3,300 hours. And those folks do a great job for what that they have to work with. Our criminal investigations division, this past year, we assigned 685 cases out to detectives to work. That was about 100 less than what we had last year. But one of the things that was eye-opening about this past year with our criminal investigation division, we recovered over $775,000 in stolen merchandise that we'd been able to hand back to people in this county that had it stolen from them. So, in most years, it averages about $200,000 to $300,000. But these guys done just a bang-up job this year of recovering a lot of stolen property. Of course, the two type cases that we work more than anything else from a criminal standpoint is breaking and entering and larcenies. And of course, that can unfortunately be tied back to the drug issues that not only this county, but every county has to deal with. That I can assure you, those are the two things that our detectives are going to always work more than anything else. 2018 continued to be a record-setting year for our drug enforcement guys. Since 2013, with the sheriff's office drug arrest has gone up over 200%, 200% since 2013. We continue to work really hand-in-hand with the unit, the group from here in our county, along with our criminal suppression guys. The grant that we got a couple, or last year, that county commissioners helped us with, I think that has just enhanced what we do. We now have five canines. We have a canine on each shift plus one, and that means, that really helps us to have a dog on each shift, because we're not out looking for a dog, or having to call another agency to come and help us unless that our dog's tied up. And sometimes, we've got a dog tied up, and we still have to call and get somebody else's dog, but we're very blessed in that area now. Our canine units assisted us in securing over $80,000 in cash last year as well. So, those animals are amazing. Our detention center, in 2018, we booked in 4,016 people. That is 6% of our population. Last year, it was 5% of our population. The year before that, it was 4% of our population. Our bookings continue to rise. Our average daily population for our inmates this past year total was 120, and the average length of stay was 11 days. Our kitchen staff prepared 130,000 meals at a cost of $1.64 per meal. The average cost per inmate per day, $80.91. Through a grant with the Pathway Center, the detention center received two full-time peer support specialists to work directly with our inmates that are coming and going from our detention center. Their focus is on case management and release planning, as well as just re-entry into the community. And it has been a blessing to have two peer support specialists inside that jail that we're not having to pay for, that is doing some really, really good things for these guys and girls as they are trying to re-enter back into society. Speaking of the Pathway Center, I just got the numbers for the Pathway Center sent to me today. In 2018, of the people who left our facility, the detention center in Haywood County, and walked over and got into a program with the Pathway Center, 62% of the females had not re-offended and had come back into our jail, and 51% of the men who had re-entered society through the Pathway Center had not been back in jail. Those numbers are pretty consistent with the way it has been, and at the end of the day, the Pathway Center has been a major blessing for us. It continues to keep those jail numbers down, and keeps me from having to come up here and ask you, gentlemen, to take a look at starting to build a new jail, because that's something that we don't want to do. Those are very, very expensive. Between the statewide misdemeanor confinement program, our inmate commissary and our phone account, we generated $183,000 this past year to put back into the county general fund. One of the things that we have to do that is very expensive for our county though, and that is involuntary commitments. During 2018, law enforcement officers in our county served the most that they had ever served in involuntary commitments. 647 people was involuntarily committed this past year. Of course, once they're involuntarily committed, then they become my responsibility to be able to get them to wherever that they need to go from there. Our detention staff traveled over 55,000 miles this past year in taking people for their treatment, or to go to a hospital somewhere in this state. And what happens is, not only do we have to get them there, but as soon as they're released, then we have to go back and get them, pick them up, and take them back to their residence. So it's a very expensive process. And if we haul a female, if we transport a female, or a juvenile, then of course, we have to have two people to go at any one time. One of our other problems in that area is the fact that we don't have mental health facilities in the western part of the state anymore. All of our facilities is really east of Raleigh, Goldsboro onto the coast, and we spend a lot of time, sometimes as many as three, of our detention vehicles will be on the road at any one time transporting involuntary commitments. Inmate work crews. Our inmate work crews that we take out day in and day out totaled a 10,282 hours this past year. Let me tell you what these guys and ladies done. They done a whole array of different things, but working at the county fairgrounds, many, many days, they worked down there this past year. They sealed the concrete floors, they painted the interior of the building, they set up for the fair and for anything else that they asked for. We worked at Duaneville Watershed this past year. We done all the weed eating up and down the roads, we done all the bush whacking, we cleared some road banks, we done some different things around the dam, saved the town of Duaneville quite a bit of money, I'm sure, by investing in these inmates to do that. Folk moot, we continue to maintain that building and keep it up from a work standpoint of just fiscal labor. Haywood Christian Ministries, we're down there working quite a bit. At the Test Farm this past year, we completely cleared the banks of the Raccoon Creek, we picked the produce, we delivered produce to different places that were nonprofit throughout our county. We picked up many tons of roadside garbage, as well as doing things with the code enforcement folks that we work with on a daily basis. We also worked in this building quite a bit, moving files and cleaning offices, and palletizing old equipment for recycle as well. Lots of other things that we did, that just a few of the highlights of what these folks do for us. Also courthouse security, which is one of the things that, from a general statute, that I'm tasked as the sheriff to provide. This past year, right over here in this building, there was 632 different times that court was opened, and different court sessions, 632. Many times, there's four courts a day, at least, goes on in that building, and a lot of times, we have over 400 people at any one time sitting in a district court. A lot goes on over there. Community-centered programs, the big word for us is engagement. We want to engage the community, we want to be part of the community, and we want to invite the community to be part of what we do. One of the things that we have really stressed this past year is our citizens on patrol unit. We started out with three people, now we're at five. And what these folks do is, they ride around in a marked citizens on patrol car, you folks might have saw them, they are out engaging the communities, some in which that we don't get to very often, and they are basically more eyes and ears for us and our community. They don't do enforcement, but they sure do a lot of intelligence. They give us some really, really good information. They work with our community watch programs. Most of these people that are involved in this are either prior law enforcement or prior military, and they are really, really interested in doing a good job for our county, and they do. Our community watch program is probably bigger now than it's ever been. We want to talk to people in their communities, and we want to tell them what they can do to help us help them. And so, we spend a lot of time doing community watch, because we want people to feel safe, and sometimes, we have to empower them to be, to do it for themselves, simply because, hey, things are continuing to be tough all over. We have been blessed to get that sixth deputy on each of our shifts, but that's still 554 square miles to cover in this county. So, something else that we do is, we still got our Crime Stoppers hotline, and we get the opportunity each year now to present to every eighth grader in our county about a drug program that we call Drugs in Our Mist. And so, that has gone very, very well with us. We partner with those people. And one of the very interesting things that we have done also, as I finish up, and that is, we had a sheriff's summer camp last year. We invited, we just opened it up, and in about 40 minutes, we had all of the applicants that we could possibly take, but we took 10- to 13-year-olds, and we just engaged with them. We decided that we wanted to try to find a way to bridge a gap of showing a different side of law enforcement than what a lot of these kids get to see, or maybe hear about from somebody, or watch TV. So, we had a week of summer camp. We had donations come in that paid for every bit of this, and we had a great time. It was just a good week for us to engage with community, plus, we got to spend time with their families as well. And sometimes, that's all it takes in order to build that trust that we need to build, especially in law enforcement. We continue to offer our Refuse to Be a Victim's classes, our church safety training. Any church that wants us to come out and take a look at what's going on at their church, we have a group that's trained that'll be glad to come out and take a look and see what they're doing good, and what they may need to improve on. We have active shooter training that we teach. We've taught it here, we've taught it in different buildings in the county, as well as other places. We go to businesses and teach this as well. So, and I'll finish up by saying, you know, we have a lot of great employees at the sheriff's office. They do a fantastic job, and not only do they give while they're working, but they do a lot of things off-duty. I ask them to come out and be a part of, and help us with lots of different things that they don't get paid to do. And they really, really are a blessing to our community and to our county. We do the torch run for Special Olympics, we have the cops on top, we do the bell ringing for the Salvation Army, we do Toys for Tots. Anything that we can be involved in to make our communities and our county better is what we try to do. And I'm very appreciative of the people that we have that works with us, and I'm very thankful for the county commissioners and the county manager, and what gets done in our county through partnership. So, that's the down and dirty, and I will send this to you.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Greg?
I just would like to say, I just appreciate the job that Sheriff Christopher does in engaging himself in the community, in the department in the community. And I know a lot of those guys, I work out with them, I see them in court, and you've got a good bunch of deputies, and they want to make this community better. And it's not just catching the bad guys in law enforcement, it's engaging and being part of the community, and I really appreciate that, appreciate what I've seen.
Thank you. Anybody?
You know, one number sticks out, and I've heard Greg give these numbers before. 120 inmate average for the year 2018 at a cost of $80. You're looking at $9,600 per day. And so, this drug problem, and trying to mitigate this problem, trying to educate our kids, trying to educate parents through word of mouth, and speaking against these things, and you know, trying to show people a better road, that's what it all should be about from your heart. But the bottom line is, that's $9,600 a day. And we're up here trying to figure out how to lower people's tax rates, and so on and so forth. Here's something we can get involved with as individuals, to try to reduce this, tell people, it's a better way. You don't have to get on drugs, you don't have to be in jail. So, thank you for those numbers.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I was in the tag office this past week and ran into an individual that says he was put in jail the week prior, and he was bragging on you, Sheriff. in jail the week prior, and he was bragging on you, Sheriff, so I just wanted you to know. I said, "And I'm not sure I understand this right, but you're bragging on a guy that put you in jail." And he went on to say that you had come to him, brought him in your office, I assume, brought him out somewhere and talked with him, and I hear that from time and time again. So I just appreciate the job you do, and as you've mentioned, the whole staff does at the sheriff's office. We've got a good sheriff's department, and I appreciate all the good hard work.
Thank you.
Anything more?
The citizens on patrol, that's something interesting. I had never heard of that. That would be really great. I know, I live in the Bethel community, and we've had a lot of issues over the years, and it comes in pockets. People will come over and they will come and do some things, and then they'll disappear for a few years, but I'll definitely pass the word around that that's something that's going on, and I'm really glad to see that, because I think once the people become involved, they'll understand a little bit more about what you guys get into, because it's not really all as much fun riding around in a patrol car and looking for people that are out of place, or looking for someone who's up to something really bad. And I think that's a great idea, because this word gets around, a lot more people may want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Greg. I just, I know I say this all the time, but Greg, by implementing and allowing some faith-based programs, has kept the jail population from us not having to add a pod on to the jail, which is about a million dollars. So, and when the sheriff came on in 2013, it was busting at the seams, and he implemented the faith-based programs, I'm sorry, I said that five times, but I always wondered how that, I knew they would work, and I always wished that they would be implemented in Haywood County, and the sheriff implemented those. And as a taxpayer, you should appreciate that, because that addition to the jail has been held off for six years now, because we've introduced these programs, because they work, because when you change people's hearts, you change their actions, and that's what the sheriff has been able to do in working with our churches to do that. So I'm so glad that the commissioners partnered with you and with the faith-based community by allowing pathways to come about, and they, really the churches picked up the mantle, if you will, and have put the work in it to do that. So, and I thank you, Sheriff, because I know they all appreciate all that you do and allow them to come and do that, and you're out there with them. I don't think the people realize, it affects people's lives and it affects your pocketbook because we're not paying for more people to be in that jail. So we appreciate that. All right, moving on. Under administrative agency reports, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm backwards on that. Under the discussion adjustment to the agenda, I don't have anything on that. Does anyone? Okay. Okay, under the consent agenda, we have the request approval of the March 4th, 2019 regular meeting minutes. Do we have any additions, corrections, or changes to those? Ain't hearing none, we'll move to item two of the consent agenda, which is to request approval of the January 2019 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries, and we have our tax assessor Judy Hickman here tonight. Welcome Judy.
Good evening. I'm requesting approval of the February 2019 releases, refunds, adjustments, and discoveries. I have a total of $246.44 in the motor vehicle refunds. Releases came to a total of $4,684.65, and in discoveries, there were $9,152.34.
Is that pretty average for this month?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah. And your discoveries do include the rollback bills as well.
The rollback what?
Rollback bills from land use.
Okay, okay, that's right. Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, how does that work, Judy, if the rollback?
Mm-hmm.
If you don't mind, they explain.
Yep. By law, we're required every year to audit one-eighth of the parcels. So what they do is they send out letters to the people who are in land use or farm use, and they will require that they send in some of their finance, I think it's a Schedule F is what they have to turn in, which shows that they are producing an income. And once they turn in all the paperwork, if everything is correct, then they stay in land use. If not, then we work with them to try to get them back into compliance.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have a question for Judy? Okay, thank you Judy.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Okay, our next item of business will be the request approval of the February 2019 tax collections updates and refunds. We have our tax collector Greg West tonight. Welcome Greg.
Good evening commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I'm here to request approval of the 2019 tax collections, updates, and refunds. As of February 28th, the collection office has collected $37,204,381.30, which is a percentage collected of 93.51%. Our past due receivables for 2018 is $2,569,409.79. I'd be glad to answer any questions concerning these numbers.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Greg?
We collected over a million dollars, $1,018,328 in February, which was, I thought was a pretty good month. Last year, they collected around $900,000, so we're almost a couple hundred thousand dollars more than last year. And March is going well as well. I'd like to give a friendly reminder to all the public out there that delinquents' names will be published in the paper on March 27th. That's coming up pretty soon. Taxpayers can pay up until March 22nd in order to keep their name out of the paper. We'll be working diligently to make sure the names that are in there are supposed to be, and so forth. As far as our refund report, there was $324.89 refunded in the month of February. Most of those refunds come as landfill fees that come from properties that are no longer lived in. They have to provide information to the assessor's department, bring in a power bill, power statement that shows there's not been usage there, or the appraisers go out, take a look at the property, see if the power meter's been removed, and things like that. That's the majority of that money.
Questions for Greg?
I have a general question. Someone did call me, it's been several weeks ago, and they were asking about storage buildings being used as residences.
That happens, and what happens, we'll get calls from neighbors or other people in the community that will say, you know, someone's living here at this address or whatever, and the assessor's office will send appraisers out to verify that information. And if that's the case, then those storage buildings will go from personal property to real property. You know, there's going to be changes made there so that it reflects that they are lived in, they'll get a landfill fee, and all those things like that.
So anybody, because I didn't know what to tell him, he was supposed to call back, and he's not called me back yet. So anybody that sees that just needs to call the tax office.
That's correct. I mean, we're seeing more, you know, more and more, I mean, it's few, but there are some instances where these tiny homes that you hear about are, some of them are storage buildings.
Okay. Okay. That's interesting, Mark.
It was.
It happens.
You just never know in this one.
You know, we're working hard, payment plans, you know, people are, there's people out there struggling, you know, and so we're just asking that they come in, communicate with our office, we sit down, try to make out a payment plan that works good for them, as well as the county. People's names will be in the paper even though they're on a payment plan, because they are actually past due from January the 7th, even though they may be current on their payment plan, they're actually still past due. But we do have a lot of people that are making payment plans, and I think that's a good thing. We're trying our best to, you know, have win-win for citizens and the county. So it's tough sometimes, you know, but the communication is key, so.
Okay, thank you Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you Greg. Your next item of business will be the request approval of the 2019 local government agencies' general records retention and disposal, well, disposition schedule. We have our county manager Bryant Moorhead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is probably one of the more fascinating items on the agenda tonight. The state has sent down, from the Division of Archives, this new records retention policy that counties and municipalities will follow the state guidelines. After you all adopt this tonight, Candy will be sending out more notice to the departments that are impacted, so that we adopt the state policy. Not a lot to it, other than they're telling us how long to hold on to our records.
Anyone have any questions for Bryant?
What kind of happens to them now? They get scanned into a database and stick around, or do we still have paper? Is that what you're talking about?
A little bit of both, I believe. We have a lot of paper documents that we hold on to, and then actually we keep some electronic copies as well, or scan files.
Any other questions for Bryant on that issue? Okay, that concludes our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll make a motion.
We've got one more.
We do. Number five. Sorry. Sorry Judy, we're glad about you. Sorry, Mark.
Sheriff made that fine presentation, you about withheld money from him.
Now, this is a request approval of budget amendment of public safety, the sheriff's office, $2,000 for various departmental supplies, voluntary events from donations to the sheriff's office.
And I can make it really quick, because you just said everything about it. The sheriff does have some money that was donated to the sheriff's office to be used in his department, and he wants to use it for these volunteer events, $2,000.
Thank you Judy. Okay. Now, that concludes our consent agenda. Could someone make a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, moving on to old business, our first item of old business is to request approval of an upset bid and offer to purchase resolution and execution of a non-warranty deed to the successful bidder of county-owned property, and this is parcel number 7666-97-3194. And we have our county manager Bryant Moorhead.
Yes, sir. This is, like you said, parcel that ends in 3194. It's .77 acres on Soco Road. Assess value is $9,600. We first got an offer to purchase in the amount of $500 back on January 10th from Coast to Coast Group. We brought it to the board on January 22nd. We did our advertising, we did receive two upset bids, and the final bid was from Coast to Coast in the amount of $900. There are legal fees that we previously had incurred of $5,887.35, and we have $324 in legal advertising for the upset bid process. So the Coast to Coast will get this parcel for $900 plus the 324, so a total of $1,224.88.
Okay, so this has been advertised for and upset twice for everybody to, and you didn't have thousands of people bid, so.
We had two different people.
Two people bid, so, yeah, that's the interest we have in that. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments on? We've done a couple already, I think, at least one or two, so, and these will get these back on the tax rolls. And I hope they can do something with it, I really do. Okay, does anyone, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the upset bid for parcel 7666-97-3194. I'll make a motion. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, and then next, we have a request of approval of an upset bid and offer to purchase resolution and execution of a non-warranty deed to the successful bidder of county-owned property, and this will be parcel 7697-32-5891. Go ahead Bryant.
So this one was an initial office offer to purchase, was $1,000 on the same date, January 10th, from the same buyer, Coast to Coast. This one went through the upset bid price or process, and we have a final bid price of $1,625 from Coast to Coast. The assess value is 27.6, and we've incurred $344.64 in advertising. Previously, we had $4,750.95 in legal costs. So this will sell for a total of $1,969.64.
Right, okay. Does anybody have any questions for this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to request this approval of parcel number 7697-325891.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to new business. The first item of new business is to request approval of a resolution recognizing the National Lineman and designation of April 8th, 2019, as National Lineman Appreciation Day. And we have our county manager Bryant Moorhead and Haywood Electric Membership Corporation manager of marketing and communications, Ken Thomas. And welcome, Ken.
Evening gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me this time to make this request. I am Ken Thomas with Haywood Electric Membership Corporation. However, I'm here speaking on behalf of all the linemen and linewomen in Haywood County, whether it's Haywood EMC, the town of Waynesville, or Duke Energy. And then so, I'd like to propose the commissioners to adopt a resolution recognizing linemen, the profession of linemen, and the contributions of these brave men and women who protect public safety across Haywood County and our nation, and expressing support for the designation of April 8th, 2019, as well as the second Monday of every April here following, as Lineman Appreciation Day. Whereas, the profession of lineman is steeped in personal, family, and professional tradition, whereas linemen are often first responders during storms and other catastrophic events, working to make the scene safe for other public safety heroes. Whereas, linemen work with thousands of volts of electricity, high-top power lines, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to keep electricity flowing. Whereas, linemen must work, must often work under dangerous conditions far from their families to construct and maintain the energy infrastructure of the United States as well as Haywood County. Whereas, linemen put their lives on the line every day with little recognition from the community regarding the danger of their work, and whereas the second Monday in April each year would be appropriate, an appropriate date to designate as Lineman Appreciation Day. On April 10th of 2013, this same resolution was considered and agreed by the Senate of the United States, first session of the 113th Congress, as April 18th, as National Lineman Day. However, on April 6th, 2017, North Carolina Governor Roy Cooper signed a proclamation recognizing the second Monday of April as Lineman Appreciation Day in North Carolina, and that's what we're proposing that Haywood County does for Haywood County.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ken. Did you need, let me see. Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Ken. I appreciate you bringing that forward. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I make a motion, we approve that resolution.
Okay, is there a second?
As presented.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? I will say, appreciate, Ken, you know, you're bringing this, and, you know, every now and then you'll read the paper about, you know, they're cutting trees for the power lines, and neighbors kind of fuss about that, but I always remember those cold snowy days when those trees knock down a power line and they don't have power, if they're thinking about that, so. So I guess I'm just putting the word out, when they're clearing the power lines, the reason for that is so the power doesn't go out on these days. And I know HEMC, I have HEMC power during the During the last storm, I was not out of power at all, and I appreciate, I know, I know a lot of people were out of power. My mom and dad were out of power for days, so, but I appreciate all y'all do, Ken, and you bringing this forward. Does anybody else have anything they want to add?
Thank you Ken.
Thank you, okay. All those in, I'll see, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, and our second item of new business is to request approval to purchase two Ford 150 trucks for environmental health services for a total of $47,398.96 for one Ford Explorer for Health and Human Services in the amount of $30,459 to be paid from budgeted funds. Health and Human Services Director Ira Dove. Welcome Ira, you doing all right?
Fine, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Want to discuss the purchase of three vehicles tonight. These are in the budget. Two of the vehicles are for environmental health, as you mentioned. We're asking for Ford F-150 trucks. These will replace a Ford F-150 that has 215,000 miles on it, that's a '01 Ford, and a '05 Crown Vic that has 197,240 miles on it. They haul a lot of equipment in the environmental health vehicles, four-foot soil loggers and a whole lot of other equipment, so it's necessary to get the larger trucks. This was put out, not on formal bid, but on an informal bid for people responded. The winning bid would have been Asheville Ford with the price that's down at the $23,699.48 plus tax and tags, and so that would be the environmental health trucks. The other vehicle is the Explorer we're requesting to purchase as a general agency vehicle. This is a vehicle that would haul children. Ken Wilson won that particular bid. We did put it out in formal, and he was the only one that guaranteed he'd have it here by June 30th as well. It also replaces, is a replacement of our fleet, so.
Okay, this is from budgeted funds that we've...
They are budgeted.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request to purchase two Ford 150 pickups and a Ford Explorer, and these are for Health and Human Services.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all those indicate by saying aye. Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you Ira.
Thanks Ira.
Okay, the third item of new business is to request approval of a revised Commissioner Meeting Order of Business and Amendment to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners Policy and Rules of Procedures. And we have our county manager Bryant Morehead, and I know this was discussed at the Commissioner's School, I believe, that Mark and Tommy and Bryant attended about streamlining your agenda.
During the new Commissioner orientation, they had a mock board meeting, and they outlined rules of procedure, and this doesn't quite fit that completely. We've changed it to more coincide with what the School of Government suggests, but still keeps the things that are working here. So consent agenda, we call it regular agenda, then the appointments section has been moved down. So really, not a lot as far as the procedures go. The one thing that this does is allows us to expedite the consent agenda items. When things come in that are typically considered housekeeping items, maybe like the sheriff's $2,000 donation, or things like that, you wouldn't necessarily have to review each one separately, but you could make a motion to adopt them and pass them all at one time. That way you can spend more time on the regular agenda items that are placed on there because they may involve appropriations of fund balance, or things that need to be discussed more at length.
So you'll kind of just, you and Candy will look at, at the request and see if it kind of fits that mold?
We'll do that, but also we meet with you on the Wednesday before the meetings to make sure that it's placed in the proper place. So I think that, between Candy, myself, and working with the chairman, it'll be a good gatekeeper of what goes where.
Does anyone have any questions?
Well, I know when we saw the mock that they did, they had a section in there where you could pull things out of the consent agenda if there was a question on it. All it took was a motion and a second, you could pull them out, put them on the agenda for that day, and they just dropped down in order. That's kind of the way this is going to work.
That's correct. You would have, at the discussion of the agenda, you'd have the chance to pull it, or just ask questions and leave it on consent, or you could pull it down to the regular agenda.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Here now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised Commissioner Meeting Order of Business and Amendment to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners Policy, Rules, and Procedures. I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, here now, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, and our fourth item of new business is the request appointments of members to the Board of Equalization and Review, which requires a Board of Commissioners vote. We interviewed 10 candidates before the meeting, and we will be appointing seven of those members to the Equalization and Review Board. Bryant, if you want to pass out ballots.
Vote for sale. know, by the way, and I appreciate everybody's participation in that and their interest in serving. I heard a guy tell me yesterday, he said, he asked a fellow one time, said, "What's worse, ignorance or apathy?" A guy answered him and said, "I don't know and I don't care." Some of you got that. Appreciate y'all's participation.
Yeah, I've been sitting here, I've been sitting trying to figure out who I was going to vote for the whole meeting, because they were all good candidates.
Take just a few minutes here. It was a, it was a good bunch of candidates. And we always appreciate the fact that people will, you know, apply to do these jobs, and it's unfortunate that we can't put everybody on the, on the board that comes in to apply, but we cannot, and it is, as you probably know, Tommy, market is one of the most difficult things that we do.
Yep. It really is.
Yeah, I think I explained to them, or said to them when we were sitting down there, I said, "Now you see how hard this is, you know, you got so many good candidates that apply, and you wish you could take them all." But again, I'm appreciative as well, that we had as much interest as we did, and we got some good candidates as we do that's wanting to serve in Haywood County.
We could talk basketball, I mean, who, is anybody picking the winner? You want to start Tommy?
Pardon me?
He's not, he's not...
I'm going to stay away from that.
Good move. How do you want me to announce them? I can announce the seven top vote-getters, or I can give you the numbers, or however you want to do it. Tell me how you want it.
Seven top vote-getters is fine.
What's that?
The seven tops.
The seven top vote-getters, there are no ties for the seventh and eighth position or any other, that, there's no other, there's no confusion about who the top seven vote-getters are. They are these. Evelyn Cooper, Elizabeth Culberth, Jimmy Flynn, James Harley Francis Jr., Linda Bennett, Grover Bradshaw, and Ted Carr. Those are the top seven, one, two, three, let me count them again. Yep, seven. Those are the top seven vote-getters.
Okay.
We have the, we have the ballots preserved and the tally sheet preserved, so you can put those, enter those in the records if you want to.
Okay. Okay, so we don't need to vote on that, we voted on it, so.
You've, you've elected them now. I think they have to be, if I'm remembering, do you have to be sworn, do you do that now? Do you do it at a special meeting, before the first meeting? Yeah, I think they have to actually come in and swear. Right, they have to be sworn, take a special oath, and then...
There'll be a school, a little school, a little training session for them too.
Gotcha, okay.
Could you repeat those, please, Mr. Queen?
Sure. The top seven vote-getters are Evelyn Cooper, Elizabeth Culberth, Jimmy Flynn, James Harley Francis, Linda Bennett, Grover Bradshaw, and Ted Carr.
And at our next meeting, we'll set the pay and, we'll do a resolution that establishes the pay and the chair and the vice chair. So y'all be thinking about that. Okay, okay, that concludes our business. Is there anything before we go into closed session? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session for economic development. It'll be 143-11 point, I mean, 143-318.11, little a, four. Motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Okay, we'll be in closed session when we enter the chambers in the back. We're back from closed session, back into open session. Is there any other business before the board? Here now, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.